Call this public forum to order, and could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today for this public forum. I think there's a sign-in sheet, or it's been passed around for our guests that are here to sign in. And Amy, have you gotten everybody off the list? Do you need any information from people that are joining us via Zoom?
I just need some last names.
Some last names.
Susan.
Is there a Susan out there?
Susan Bourne, B-O-U-R-N-E.
Thank you, Susan.
Susan.
A Beverly? Is there a Beverly? Catherine?
Catherine Henry.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else, Amy?
Sue Ellen.
Sue Ellen?
Okay, let it go.
That's right.
Is that it?
That's it. So, the purpose of this public forum was because at our 17th Select Board meeting, the Select Board voted unanimously to declare the Chester Telegraph as our paper of record.
Our paper of record.
And there has been some questions on to why we did it and the fact that we did it. So, we wanted to get the public's input as far as any concerns that people had or questions or comments they would like to make to the board, and we're trying to gather some information so we could see where we go from here. At this point, I would open up the floor to anyone that would like to express a comment or a concern regarding our choice for the paper of record. Sharon, please just come up and state your name to the microphone.
Honors.
Thank you so much for letting us speak here tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sharon Huntley, and I am a journalist for The Vermont Journal. In the last three weeks, I've been thinking a lot about our paper and what I do for a living, and the value that a small-town weekly newspaper can provide to a community, as well as some limitations. And instead of defending what our paper isn't, I'd like to talk about what our newspaper is. We are the only news source in this area that does not rely on privilege. To read our publication, you don't need a computer, you don't need a monthly Internet subscription, you don't need a reliable and strong Internet signal, and you don't need a window of time that you can get on a shared computer. Not only is our paper free, we deliver it to everyone in town. In fact, we deliver it even if you don't want it to be delivered to you anymore. It's pretty impossible not to see our paper each week. You said you're willing to send out information directly to anyone that needs it, but ask yourselves, how can someone know if they're missing information if they don't see what they're missing? I understand your affection and appreciation for the Chester Telegraph. They are a fine news source, and I have tremendous respect for what they do for the town. I've heard a lot of talk about how things are changing now, and you're right, things are changing. But as far as the law about where legal notices can and can't be posted, things haven't changed yet. I'd like to introduce you to our new publisher, Shante Webb, who will talk about specifics concerning the current state statute, among other legal concerns. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sharon.
Hi, I'm Shante Webb. Can you hear me? I'm the new publisher of The Vermont Journal and Shopper. I understand that the town of Chester has chosen the Chester Telegraph, the online news source, as their paper of record, which went against the attorney's legal opinion in an attempt to save money. I do believe that you've prematurely made this decision since the Vermont statute still indicates that, quote, "When a notice is required to be given by publication and a newspaper, it shall mean a newspaper published in the county where the subject matter is situated." It continues that, quote, "The court may cause such notice to be further published in a newspaper which circulates the neighborhood of the persons interested." It goes on to say that those notices should be published, excuse me, in either a daily, semi-weekly, or weekly newspaper. Those terms have always been used to describe a printed and distributed newspaper and not an online news source. I believe you're wrongfully reinterpreting the statute as it was written. The term newspaper was commonly defined as, quote, "A paper that is printed and distributed usually daily, weekly, and contains news, articles of opinion, features, and advertising." That definition was from the Merriam-Webster dictionary and provided by your attorney when he gave his legal advice. As Sharon stated, you want to provide printed notices to anybody that requests them, so we're just wondering how they know what they should be requesting if they don't have access to that, if they don't have Internet. The Vermont Journal distributes our paper free of charge to over 25,000 mailboxes every week, goes right to your door. Our papers are also on newsstands free of charge. Readers don't have to pay for Internet or a computer or have access to Internet or physically look things up online. However, our legal notices are posted online as well, free of charge. We have visitors from all over New England and the country and receive considerable activity online. We've got over 20,000 visits each month on our website, and our online advertisers have 350,000 views per month. And we don't have a paywall for our viewers to read our news or view the legal notices online. Our online serves additional resource to our printed paper. I believe that legally, the town notices should continue to be published and distributed in a printed newspaper so that it is accessible to all, as recommended by the town's attorney. That law is in place to protect small newspapers like us and small communities like us. It's also a law that all of the selectmen took an oath to abide by, which the oath states, "I do solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of selectmen within and for said town, and will therein do equal right and justice to all men and the best of my judgment and abilities according to law. I also solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the State of Vermont and of the United States, so help me God." That being said, I think it's possible that you're opening yourselves up to lawsuits or possible requests of resignation, as these legal notices do need to be properly warned so that everybody can see them. An online news source may not reach all of the residents of Chester. We're a local community paper seeking to adhere to our community standards. Though the law may change in the future, it hasn't changed yet. Regardless of your decision, I appreciate your time in allowing us to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak regarding this matter?
If you're on Zoom, just raise your virtual hand would be great for Amy.
I would.
Linda?
Who is it?
Linda Diack.
Linda Diack.
Linda Diack, go ahead, Linda.
Well, before I say what I would like to say, I think that the Journal is overstepping. They're offering legal opinion and legal advice, and they aren't qualified to do either. But I do want to speak in support of the town's decision to use the Telegraph for public notices. The Telegraph came to be because Cynthia Prairie saw a need for a means to inform the townspeople on the issues and events that affect our lives. The Telegraph doesn't simply cover town or school board meetings. It researches and investigates the issues presented. It holds our officials accountable when needed, and it covers issues that are important to us as a community. When Sean Cunningham attends the press conferences that Governor Scott has given on the pandemic, he listens, but he asks questions, and he presents its information to all of us. When the vaccine refrigeration event occurred at Springfield Hospital, the Chester Telegraph was the only news source in the state to accurately report on it and continue to update the story as the new information came available to all of us. The Telegraph covers our children's activities and celebrates their successes. Reporters are sent to photograph, interview, and record these moments for all of us. It maintains a community calendar. Residents are given space to voice opinion, write editorials, and contribute to the Telegraph. The Chester Telegraph is our hometown news source, and I believe that they do an excellent job as such. Sharon spoke of privilege. We do provide free Wi-Fi in this town, but it's also a matter of privilege to produce, print, and distribute in an age of recycling thousands of pieces of paper that end up in trash cans in the post office and on the postal floor. So, I disagree strongly with her privileged contention. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter?
Hi, Arnie, this is Ginger.
I'm sorry.
Ginger Roper.
Ginger Roper.
Go ahead.
I don't disagree with what Linda said, but however, I think it's a matter of accessibility, and we should do everything we can as a town to make the information accessible to all. And if the Journal does go to every single home, it's every Thursday I look forward to getting it, and I pick it up and read it, whereas I can't say that I, on a weekly basis, would click on to go to the Chester Telegraph to look. I don't disagree with what Linda said as far as their talent and what they research and what they write about, but it's more to me about accessibility for all of our citizens to be able to get the news source. And it is free and goes to everybody's house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have their hand up?
Cheryl Joy Lipton.
Cheryl Joy, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hey, hello, thanks. I also don't want to talk about the quality of writing. I don't want to make a comment once one way or the other about it. What I do, I know it's a little, I'm going to restate what others have said, but I just want my opinion out there as well. Some people don't have access to a computer or access to Internet, and some people don't want to have access to a computer or Internet, and they do prefer to read a physical paper. They don't want one more thing that's going to require them to spend more time on a screen when they already have to be on a screen for so many hours each day, as it is for work or other things. Additionally, I think, and this my daughter brought up, but she has a really good point, that it's redundant to have it online. It's not a second place, because already it's online on the Chester website. All the information is posted there. So, and the idea of the cost being less than The Vermont Journal, I don't think that that's a valid thing to talk about when, on another item, you're talking about putting two bridges in instead of one, which is way more expensive. And so, to worry about this small amount of money doesn't seem to make sense to me. So, I agree, though if the Chester Telegraph wanted to send out an actual, physical copy, I would have not, I wouldn't have a problem with whatever paper you guys chose to have as the paper of record. I, too, have to be on the computer a lot, all the time, and when I drink my cup of coffee, I want to read a physical piece of paper at my kitchen table. So, that's it.
Thank you, Cheryl Joy.
Amy, are there any other hands when you scroll down?
Yeah. Susan Bourne.
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you. I've only lived in Chester for five years, but when I was looking around in the area for a place to settle, the fact that there was the Chester Telegraph online and an active news source already was very attractive to me and was part of my decision to move here. I'm very mindful, living on the senior circle, that not everyone has access or wants access to an online newspaper, but it seems to be in a spirit of collaboration that perhaps legal notices or those that require publication in a physical newsprint could be published in the Journal without any detriment to the Chester Telegraph and all the fine work they do in reporting all that they report. That's all I have to say for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Amy, are there any other hands on that list?
Could I make one more comment?
Is there, hang on, Linda, is there anybody else as you scroll up?
Cheryl Joy still has her other mic.
That's it? Okay, all right. Go ahead, Linda.
Go ahead, Linda.
Well, you know, I made the comments about the Telegraph and the job that it does because I think it's important for us as a town to support our local news source. But the issue at hand is the publication of notices, which the town is required to mail out to any concerned parties in the case of a tax issue or if it's an abutment issue, et cetera. And in terms of contractor bids, no, they're not mailed to every possible contractor, but there isn't a contractor working successfully in any way, shape, or form that isn't trolling the Internet for bid possibilities. And this is the only issue, not whether every resident can read every news story. And the Journal doesn't print, doesn't, I believe, they don't, I don't want to make a misstatement here, but I do not believe they have staff that comes to our events, that comes to our meetings, et cetera, and does investigative reporting for the town of Chester. But that's not the issue. The issue is whether or not these public notices, if it's sufficient to put them on the Telegraph, the Telegraph being online. And it's my understanding that print is not part, the word print is not part of the state statute. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else with their hand up?
No.
I'd like to just clarify.
Arnie, it's Heather. There's a man, Stephen Pappas, who's wanting to speak.
Hang in there, we'll try. Amy, is there Stephen?
Who?
Stephen Pappas. Stephen, are you out there?
I am out here. So, I want to first address the fact that I am not a Chester resident, and I just want to be clear that it's okay for me to speak in your forum. I am the editor of the Rutland Herald.
That's fine, as long as he's acknowledged who he is and his interest in.
Go ahead, Steve.
I want to tell you just a quick story about something that, I'm also the editor of The Times Argus in the Barry Montelier area, and in a march of last year, The Waterbury Record, which was a very well-established paper, weekly, free weekly, in our neck of the woods up here, folded as a result of not enough advertising support and a huge drop in revenue that came in part from display advertising going away, classified advertising going away, and legal notices and public notices going away. That obviously was a blow. It's a trend that we're seeing across the nation. Vermont newspapers are obviously not immune to it. And The Times Argus, at that point, recognized that that community, Waterbury, Vermont, was in need of support in the sense that there was a lot going on in that community, to the point where an online publication formed, The Waterbury Roundabout. And The Waterbury Roundabout picked up where the print product of The Waterbury Record had left off, and some journalists, some who had been laid off, some who were doing other things, came together and started forming a news organization that was aimed at making sure that folks in the community were being informed on what was going on. What they lacked, though, was exactly what you folks are talking about tonight. They were lacking the ability to be able to have that broader audience. And The Waterbury Record had been the, one of the papers of record for that community and the communities surrounding it. And we took great pride, The Times Argus took great pride in the fact that we stepped in and recognizing that there was a news desert of folks who could not be online, we used our direct-mail piece and reformatted it in such a way that the news from The Waterbury Roundabout, as well as news from The Times Argus, got into the homes of approximately 4,500 homeowners in that community. The penetration from that was greater than it was when The Waterbury Record was producing a newspaper in that community. And in very short order, the towns of Waterbury and Duxbury reached out to us to make us their papers of record because of the high penetration and the high results. And you're saying that you're looking for a change and that The Vermont Journal has been your newspaper of record for 10 to 12 years, and there's no evidence that they're delivering, they're not delivering results. As Shante said, it's been a very effective newspaper, the emphasis on paper, it's still being printed, which is what the state law does require. There's a question about whether or not The Vermont Journal is going into every home. As Shante stated, it's 100% saturation, folks. You can't do any better than getting into everybody's home. And sure, there are people who may not want to read it, but the guarantee is that it's going to show up every week, and taxpayers don't have to take the time to go to a computer and log in and sign on to anything. It's just being brought to the home. So, you can argue that the town might want to nickel and dime and cost-save, but the maximum exposure is already there. And you may disagree with perhaps the coverage, or you feel like that certain things are lacking and that the emphasis needs to go somewhere else, but the state statute does require, and you have had legal opinions in hand, that say that a newspaper is what, where a public notice needs to be placed. And, you know, I sit here today, obviously defending a newspaper and a source of revenue, which is huge for us, both The Times Argus and The Rutland Herald, and The Vermont Journal for that matter. You're not talking about an insignificant revenue stream. It is something to us. It's not a large amount to us, but it's enough that it makes a difference. And for a paper like The Vermont Journal, it does make a difference, because they don't come out daily, they come out weekly. And The Vermont Press Association and I, and folks who are advocates for making sure that democracy finds its place and that everybody has the opportunity to have a say, will defend the public notice structure as a newspaper or a paper of record. And I just want to emphasize that, that you have a situation where there was no problem. It was not broken. You did not need to fix it. The Vermont Journal was already doing it for you adequately, and we would hope that you would rethink the decision. Mike Donahue, who is the executive director of The Vermont Press Association, is also on this call. He's a longtime advocate of newspapers across Vermont of all sizes, and if Mike wants to, he can certainly speak to some of the issues that I have not addressed, but you need to reconsider your position, in part because you are, you will be in violation of state law, and you've created a situation where you're creating a divisiveness that does not need to be there. So, thank you for your time. I really do appreciate you acknowledging me and letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I just had a quick question for you.
Yeah.
Do you have any financial interests with The Vermont Journal at all? I mean, what is the relationship between the two? Because I've heard different stories and different ideas out there, and I'm not sure what's true or not true.
The only interests are the sample news group, which owns The Times Argus and The Rutland Herald, and The Claremont Eagle Times does have an interest in The Vermont Journal.
Financial interests, is it part ownership, or how does that work?
It has not been completed as a complete ownership at this point. We are interested in the publication.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah?
Before we go on to another people that want to speak, I just want to clarify a few things that I've been hearing. And part of the characterization that we made the decision about money only, that was the least amount of our decision. It was a unanimous decision, and it was more about the content, about the coverage, about a lot of other factors, and the money helped at the end, but that was not the only decision in there. And I really dislike being characterized as that's why we did it, because that was the only thing that was going on, it was about money. That's the least of the things on my part on why we did this. I did it because of decision-making that happens at a local level should be allowed. The state statute, to me, is not clear at all. It says newspaper. It doesn't define newspaper. It doesn't say print. There's a lot of ambiguity and a lot of gray area when it comes to items in the legislature like that, and they themselves are having a hard time interpreting what's going on with that. Another part of it is that I've heard before is that we're not going to reach people that want to be informed about what's happening. Anybody that's involved in a tax sale or a legal issue or a legal matter is going to be notified. They're going to be notified by the town, however they do it, through whatever means they do it. And we also put out that if there is anybody in this town that would like to get a continual mail notice of any notices that we print or put out there, it'll be in their mailbox. It'll show up on their email, in their mailbox. We want to make sure that everybody in this town is informed about what goes on. That was part of our decision, too, when we went down through this also. So, being characterized as trying to save money or taking the easy, cheap route out is not what this board is about. Are there any other comments out there?
I have a few comments.
Jeff, go ahead.
First of all, when we were voting on this paper of record, it was posted on the agenda, and I really wish that we'd heard comments from The Vermont Journal that evening and not after the fact. It was my understanding that digital media was an acceptable way of putting out our notices and everything, and there's other towns in the state that have already done it. So, I was under the assumption that it was acceptable. And as far as the statements about our oaths of office, I've taken many oaths that I still hold dear, one being to the United States Army, one being as a police officer, and one being when I became a Select Board member. And I did it, and I still hold all those oaths near and dear. I believe we did, we are doing, with what information we had at the time, the best decision we can make for the good of the whole town, the whole community, and not just certain individuals or certain publications. We're not picking on the publications. But the thing is, you know, if it was posted, why didn't we hear about this that day that we were voting on this?
Thank you, Jeff. Amy, is there anyone out there still with their hand up?
No. Cheryl Joy still has her other mic, but I think she just forgot to take it down.
No one else, Amy?
Somebody does. Somebody's waving.
Claudio.
Claudio.
Claudio, go ahead. Mr. Valise?
Yeah, just a very, very quick comment, a rarity. Chesterites do not stay in Chester. I know a few who, one of whom right now is in South Africa. There are others who go to Europe. There are others who go to the South Sea Islands and other parts of the United States. Maybe not as much now as we all hope post-coronavirus. There are others who go to Europe, there are others who go to the South Sea Islands and other parts of the United States. Maybe not as much now as we all hope post coronavirus. And I'm unaware of the Vermont Journal being distributed in the South Sea Islands, or Germany, or South Africa. And yet, those Chesterites who are traveling want to remain informed of what is happening in their community because of the significance it has, the impact it has on their lives upon their return. This is one aspect of the really national and international debate between print and media, and electronic media, or online media. But the other aspect is, and then that's it, is that increasingly, the content of information is not merely that of print. And those of you who know me know that I, I virtually worship books and libraries, and nothing brings me greater pleasure than to snuggle up with a slightly smelly book and lose myself in its content. But increasingly, the content is interactive, it is video, it is by-the-second news. A lot of news isn't required for us to know about in the next few seconds, but once in a while it is. A 9/11, et cetera, has significance to us emotionally and in our larger view of life. And having access to what the rest of the human condition is doing, or what's going on in Chester, more immediately, when it's important, has great impact on our lives. I would propose some variation, and I speak only in the abstract, because I've not been into the weeds on this. I would propose contemplating the possibility of some sort of mixed-use outcome. Officially, The Chester Telegraph, but maybe in parallel in print in the Vermont Journal. But that's as far as I'll go. Otherwise, my points remain there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Clark.
There was one, Mike Donahue, has his hand up?
Yeah. Mr. Donahue, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for allowing the Vermont Press Association to be heard tonight. I wasn't really planning on speaking, I was listening more, but since Steve Pappas threw me under the bus, I guess I better try to get out from under the bus. Just by way of background, I've had a 50-year career here in Vermont, primarily with the Bronson Free Press. I'm semi-retired. I also was an adjunct professor at St. Michael's College Journalism Department, teaching for three decades and advising over there, including classes on media law and ethics. So I do know a little bit about legal notices and the purpose and so forth. I was glad to hear the chairman say, this issue was not a money issue, because that really is the last reason for making a newspaper of record. The bottom line is, public notices, as the name implies, is you want the widest public to get the notice. You know, they didn't tell you to hang it on a tree out in the woods, it's to be published in the newspaper. And the Vermont law is quite clear about what a newspaper is. It hasn't changed. I guess Steve Pappas said, you've got two legal opinions that say you shouldn't change, I guess. I haven't seen, I've seen one of them, I think. But, you know, the bottom line is, it's designed to be in a newspaper, and it should be the widest distribution, because public notices, that's the whole purpose, so that the public does in fact see and, or get a chance to read them. And one gentleman said something about Vermont Journal is not distributed in foreign countries. I'm not sure how big you're searching for a foreign audience, but the reality is, the Vermont Journal is there as much as The Chester Telegraph is in those international countries where you go online. And I should back up and say, I do appreciate The Chester Telegraph. I've, I've met Cynthia and John. I do think they do a good job. I just don't think that the law has changed, that the, that it should stand by with printed newspapers. There was an effort by online people to get state legal notices, that was returned down. It was an effort by some online to get the law changed. There were hearings in the legislature. The legislature decided to turn that down and to stick with newspapers as is. And I guess the other thing that might echo of what Steve Pappas said is, you know, and in, in the second selectman that mentioned, and thank you for your service to the town, the military, and to the police. But I guess the question is, why change? People were concerned that nobody turned out. But I guess if it's not broken, I guess everybody assumed that things would keep rolling along, and it wasn't like it's, you know, why the change? So I, I think this forum is a great idea. Maybe more towns ought to do it. I'm, I'm unaware, somebody said, I think that other towns have gone online. I can tell you the Vermont Press Association is unaware of any of those. I'd be interested in hearing what towns you think have done that. And I know that a lot of print have all been renewed as a newspaper of record without a whole lot of fanfare. And again, that's one of those ones, if it's not broke, you know, why are we changing it? So I'm glad to answer any questions you may have statewide, and I do agree, this is a local issue, and I understand that, but I just thought I'd offer a little bit of a statewide perspective too. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
You have Catherine?
Catherine Henry. Steve Koppin?
Catherine. Catherine.
Hi. Hi. This is Catherine Henry. I'm, I live in Chester the last 13 years. I wanted to say, first of all, I get my news, my local news, from The Telegraph. The Vermont Journal and the paper that we had previously, I, I don't get my local news there. Now, I honestly, I'm not going there to look for my legal notices and that sort of thing either, so I, I have to step back from that. But there was a, a comment about privilege that I take exception to because the times are changing. It is not, we are not static. I, I love a newspaper as much as anybody else. To sit with my coffee and read the newspaper is lots of fun. However, if I want my news, that's not where I'm getting it. Not locally, anyway. I read The New York Times online, I read The Washington Post online, and I read The Telegraph online. And this is a small town, there are going to be people that are going to miss out on certain things by relying solely on a, on a newspaper. But I think it is really wise of Chester to push forward and say, this is, we're, we're not living in the 50s. It used to be that, you know, we talk about privilege, it used to be that not everybody had a television. Where were they getting their news? You know? I, I, I just think that this idea that it's a privilege to have your news online is kind of pushing the limits in this day and age when, you know, every one of our kids has a telephone. Everyone is online. There are some people that are resisting, and I understand that, but you know, we've resisted a lot of things over time that have come to pass. And the sense that we're going to rely on a Vermont, this Vermont Journal too, where, is that being published locally? I mean, are the, all the people that are involved in that local? That hasn't been brought, I, I don't know if that's true or not. Cynthia and Sean are local, and they care about this community and are doing as much as possible to provide a service to all of us here in Chester and in the local area. So anyway, I kind of, I, I was mixing up my ideas here, and I probably got a little nervous. But I just think that, I think that some of the ideas that we should just, it ain't broke, so don't fix it. Well, it is broke. It doesn't work. I don't read that newspaper for news, and I don't know that many people that do. So, okay, that's it. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Catherine.
Sue Ellen?
Sue Ellen?
Yep.
I got it. Okay. Hi, Ken Slater here. Sue Ellen's my wife, we're sharing a screen tonight. Couple of brief comments. First of all, appreciate the decision of the selectman to support the local folks who are working their tails off to do good things for Chester. The fact that the town is willing to send first-class mail, not third-class stuff, out to anybody who asks for legal notices would seem to cover things. And since there's a lot of non-attorneys speaking tonight, including myself, who are rendering legal opinions, I feel free to render my legal opinion. I've read the written statement that the town attorney made to the select board. And the key thing for me is that he said, the law is ambiguous. Yes, he did recommend staying the course with the old printed paper that we start fires with now, but, you know, that was mostly a cautionary, I think, opinion, as opposed to definitively saying the law is ambiguous and they don't, you know, it says publication, it does not say newspaper. All right, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Scott McDonald?
Thank you. I, before that last comment, I had a, a question for Mr. Donahue, who was talking about the legal definition. And I was simply going to ask, is there anything that specifically says that it cannot be an online publication? Because it is a form of a publication. So I, I, with no agenda, I'm just asking from a legal perspective, since if he's there, I don't know, are you still there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything explicitly, since you brought up legal definitions, that forbids an online source such as The Telegraph from being chosen by a town? That's all, that's...
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to respond? I, I usually, I know it's up to the chair as to whether people respond, I know you don't like cross dialogue.
Mr. Donahue, I think I'm going to let this one slide as far as the legal decisions go on this. Neither the person that was asking the question, nor yourself have the legal expertise to offer those opinions. And the information that we had from our attorney is out there for people to take a look and digest on their own. So I think we're just going to leave it at that, sir, at this point. So the answer is no, I, I don't think you have to worry about answering this one. Thank you.
No, I, I, I don't mind answering, because the Secretary of State's office has said...
No, this public forum is for the questions and comments that come to the select board, not to interact with other...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
It's okay, Scott, and I can go through a copy of Jim's opinion.
Okay, that would be great. I wasn't challenging anybody, I just wanted to know.
We understand.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Ginger, do you have your hand back up?
Yes, I just want to say one thing quickly. I would like to second what Claudio said as far as it, can, can the town do something where there's a mixture of using both resources, The Telegraph and the Journal? That's what I would, I like that idea. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Ginger.
So if you have already asked your question, can you put your hand down? Because everybody's hand is still up that just spoke. I just want to make sure if you had another comment.
I have another comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
One of the aspects that I really value in The Chester Telegraph is that they are online, and that when I smell burning wire, or I hear sirens, or I taste Clorox in the water coming out of my tap, I can email Cynthia, you know, whoever's there, and say, hey, what's up with this? And then they will investigate. And when I smell the Clorox in the water, I guess Sean took that question to the governor. And lo and behold, they were putting Clorox in our water, but nobody knew it. And that is kind of a, pardon the expression, a frisson of excitement for me as public journalism, and that interaction between the people who are receiving the news and experiencing what may become news, those who are reporting it.
Thank you, sir. Any more hands up? Cheryl Joy, you still have your hand up? Is that from the previous comment, or do you wish to make another one?
Yeah, sorry, Arnie, I do have another comment, but I also can't put that hand down, because every time I go over to it, it gets covered up by something. So, sorry about that. But my other comment is that I think if both, I think it's, it makes sense to use both newspapers, because I, I totally agree with the fact that everybody can comment, and that's a good thing, on there. It's more of a voice for each resident, but, and also to reach people that are out of town. But, anyway, that's it. I'm done, and I can't put the hand down.
All right, Cheryl Joy, thank you.
And I should just, for disclosure to the board, say that I received three phone calls and two letters expressing a desire to have a printed legal notices, just so that those people are represented.
Okay. Anyone else out there, Amy, with their hand up?
Julie, I have to say, I've also spoken to someone who does not, lives in Chester, does not have internet access, and is concerned about it only being in The Telegraph, our legal notices.
Yep. I just wanted to make those, make sure those people were represented. Yep.
Thank you, Lee.
Julie, this is Heather.
Go ahead, Heather.
Is it a good time for Julie? There were some things in the discussion. One, I appreciate seeing so many people out and giving us feedback, but I think that there are some misunderstandings about how we do things. And Julie, is this the forum or the time to explain how we typically put notices out and what we do?
That's up to the chair.
No, I, I would think so, sure.
So typically in the past, we have declared one paper of record, and we have gone with a printed source. And then, as much as we can, we have been, we have also put things in The Telegraph. We have done things both ways. It was my intention, since you decided to go with an online source, to just use that same process that I normally have been. It would just be reverse. So that is typically what we have done and what I had intended to keep doing with the board's direction to do that. But I don't know if legally you can appoint two official papers of record, and I would need to clarify that with Jim.
Well, and the other thing is, is a lot of times with these public notices, it's advantageous to the town to put it in different places, because what we want to do is make sure people, you know, the word gets out. So it's not as if, and there's some, there's a sense that I'm feeling that people have the assumption that we have the paper of record, The Chester Telegraph, and then we do nothing else in no other paper. And that's just not how we function, that hasn't been functioning, the way we've functioned since I've been on the board six years. And the Vermont Journal has not been the paper of record that, for, someone mentioned 10, 12 years, that's not the case. When the message was in a publication, we used to trade off and on yearly... we used to trade off and on yearly. So that's another thing that I think, you know, people should know that it wasn't a rash decision. And my understanding after talking to Tom Bach today, that there will be, there is talk of having more legislation proposed and clarifying this. So it's not a clear cut that we're doing something wrong. So I want to say that. I also want to reiterate what Arnie and Jeff said, is, you know, to characterize this decision as being made on, for a financial issue is not the case. Having said that, five to six grand is five to six grand. So anyways, those are just a few of my comments, but I really appreciate that we've had this active discussion and there's, you know, 28 or something numbered, 30 people online. So thank you all. That's all I have.
Thank you, Heather.
Mr. Chair, have a question. I'm assuming that we will be having a discussion about this at a later select board meeting?
Yes. At this point, we wanted to gather as much information as we can, and as much comments and questions or concerns that we have from the public. And I think we will put it on a future agenda item to delve into it a little more, and either to act and change, or just not act and keep it the same, depending on some more information that we'll get from our attorney, and take into account all the comments that we've had tonight. So yes.
Okay. I'll hold my comments till later then. Thank you.
Anyone else with their hand up out there? I can't see that far.
I'm not seeing any, Arnie.
No?
We do have other bills.
I'm not seeing any.
Nothing out there, Amy? No? All right. Not hearing any more comments. We're going to close this public forum at this time. And we'll go right into our select board meeting, a special select board meeting because of the time that it started. Thank you, everybody, for attending and offering your comments and concerns. And we, as a board, are trying to do what's right for this town. And we all felt strongly in the direction that we went. And we appreciate the comments and concerns of all the citizens that have spoken up tonight. Thank you all. On our select board agenda, the first item is to approve our minutes from our March 17, 2021, select board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 17, 2021, select board meeting minutes. Second.
Lee is the motion. Jeff is the second. Any corrections, concerns, omissions, anything going on with the March 17 minutes?
Yeah, Arnie, it's Heather.
Go ahead, Heather.
I, something happened, and I had technical difficulty. I could explain it, but number 12, when we came out of executive session and voted, I was unable to vote because I had, it seemed to me that I had been muted. And I kept, I could explain the technical difficulty, but I won't. But I finally was able to get on. And so the only, and it didn't change any of the votes, but I would just like to have it stated that the first four votes, I was technically, having technical difficulties and did not vote.
All right, Heather.
So the only one I voted on was the last one when I got off of mute. And I don't think I need to explain what happened. Just say that there were difficulties.
Well, it's good that you're bringing it up, because I think in the future, when we have votes that might be close, that aren't unanimous, I should take a roll call on it to make sure that I get a response from every single person, instead of just going with yays and nays. So it would be a lot clearer. And I probably should do that on most of the votes that there was any controversy on too, to make sure that everyone has a chance to have their voice known and their vote known correctly.
Well, it was one of those things that I, I wasn't muted on my side, but it said that the host had muted me. So I think inadvertently, something happened. It was not intentional. But, you know, it's one of these things that can happen somehow with Zoom. So we're all doing our best, and I was not offended or anything. It was just, I think the record should reflect technical difficulties.
All right. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any concerns, questions, changes, omissions, anything on those minutes?
I have none.
So all those in favor of approving those minutes with the addition that Heather stated regarding technical difficulties on the first four votes there, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard them all that time. Anybody opposed? Thank you, guys. Next item is to approve our minutes from our March 30 special select board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead. Lee, would you like to second it?
I'll second it.
Heather is the motion. Lee is the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, any other issues with our minutes for the special select board meeting from March 30? Nearing none. All those in favor of approving those minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Much better. Anybody opposed? All right, we'll go on. Item two is citizens' comments. If there's someone here or who has joined us via Zoom that has any questions or concerns regarding items that are not on the, that are not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Any citizens' comments?
We have someone on.
Dan Patnod?
Arnie, someone's raising their hand.
Yep. And who is it?
It was Dan Patnod.
Dan Patnod?
Yes, it is. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Dan. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. I was, I was wondering if the town had any codes or ordinances in place to keep properties from turning into essentially scrap yards or landfills? And the reason for my question is, I drove Route 10 over the weekend, and I hadn't driven it in a number of years. I was very, very disappointed with the look of many, many properties. Just, it seems like there should be codes in place to avoid those sorts of situations.
Go ahead, Julie.
So, Mr. Patnod, we do, the select board adopted two years ago, I believe, a salvage yard ordinance. Dealing with properties like that in the state of Vermont is rather difficult. There's not a lot of enforcement authority given to municipalities to clean that, to clean those properties up. But the state did pass some legislation a couple of years ago that allowed towns to adopt salvage yard ordinances. We have one adopted. We are between zoning administrators at the time. But I do know that there are several properties that have been identified. Initial letters of enforcement have been issued. So I, unfortunately, it takes, it takes a period of time to get those properties cleaned up. Some of them require litigation in order to do that. So it is a process. It's a new process for Chester. But we are, it is something we're aware of and something that our zoning department is working on.
Very good. Thank you. And one final question related to that. On Amson Hill Road, I drove by a property that had literally hundreds, if not thousands, of tires stacked up right beside the road.
Yep.
Is that one of the properties you think?
That's one of the top of the list. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's been, it's been, I believe, like you said, Julie, two years since we enacted that ordinance. And we, when we did increase the hours for the zoning administrator, that was part of the reasoning behind increasing those hours, is to possibly help with the enforcement of that. So we put the time and the manpower into it to start the process, and hopefully that'll help. A lot of times, people just need a reminder and a legal notice in the mail to start doing what they should be doing. But if it goes further than that, it starts becoming litigation with lawyers and money. And that's when the hard decisions have to be made as far as how much money a town spends to enforce these regulations and to take them further. But it has been on the radar, and it's been a concern of a lot of citizens in towns over the year, over the years. And the fact that we have something on the books now at least gives us an option to head in that direction. So we're aware of it, and the government does move slow sometimes. We're heading in the right direction, I hope. Any other citizens' comments out there?
Ginger has her hand up.
Who's that?
Ginger Roper has her hand up.
Hi.
Go ahead, Ginger.
I'm not sure if this goes now or in old business, but I am Ginger Roper on the Andover Road. And we spoke a few months ago about this speed limit and people speeding on the Andover Road. And I was told at a meeting that we would shelve the issue until spring. Well, we're in spring, and not much has happened as far as stopping the speeding on this road. It's still, people are going 55 miles an hour consistently, at least. And I've seen some beautiful signs in town. On Grafton Street, I know that was a street of issue. And on Church Street, the solar signs that tell vehicles how fast they're going. And I'm wondering if we could bring the discussion back up about either doing something like that on the Andover Road, or lowering the speed limit, or patrolling it in some fashion, because it's, it's still out of control. And I would really like for something to happen to change that.
I think where that got left, Ginger, was we didn't have enough data. In order to lower a speed limit, we have to have a certain amount of data. And we kept having issues with that portable sign. Once the evening, once the night temperatures don't drop below freezing, we can use the regional planning strips from regional planning to gather speed data. But the nights have to consistently remain above 32 degrees in order to do that. So we do have it, I have it slated on my calendar to start looking at again in May, so that we can get those strips out hopefully and get more data collected so the board can make a decision if, if we're talking about lowering a speed limit, which is what the initial discussion was, I think.
Well, yes, lowering the speed limit, but in general, the enforcement and the other part of it also.
I can talk to Rick, too, about how often the police department is out patrolling that area. They were, I know, consistently for a while.
Somebody out there every shift. Plus, now we have a corps officer
Yes.
that has been out there also. But I just want to reiterate that that is a state road, and it's a state speed limit. So when, when all this data's in, it's going to ultimately be up to the state. The town's not going to be able to say, "Lower the speed limit on that road or not."
We can have...
I thought that, I thought that Andover Road's a town road.
It's a Class II highway. So it's, it's partly state-maintained by the town.
The town's got money from, from the state for the maintenance of that, of that road. But it is considered a state road.
But the town does, can weigh in, Ginger. The town can weigh in and give input to the state and make a request, if that's what the board decides to do.
No. I'm, may I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What, what data was received on Church Street and Grafton Street and at the beginning of town to, to have you guys make the decision to put the, those fancy signs up that tell drivers what their speed limit is?
The data collection is just for lowering a speed limit, which is what their crest initially was, was to lower the speed limit, which is why we were doing the data collection. It's up to the board if they want to put, if they want to purchase a speed radar sign for Andover Road. But the data collection is for lowering a speed limit.
Understood.
Could I ask where the, where the electronic sign is on Grafton Road?
There is no one on Grafton Road.
Okay.
Oh, I, I thought that I saw one. Apologies. Definitely on Church Street.
Yes, on Church Street. And also, I think that when you reach the Andover Town Line, is that still part of the state highway system, Julie?
I would imagine so, but I'm not certain of that. I don't know where it begins and ends.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It's, it's, that's the tricky part, because a state speed limit is 50 miles an hour. When you get to the town line, to where Andover has their first 30 mile an hour speed line, uh, speed sign, that is state highway. So technically, that section of road is 50 miles an hour.
Wow.
So it's not pushing the other one.
Really?
So this is a topic we definitely should revisit in the near future and see if we could resolve the issue. We could talk to Andover. We could gather our data that we need and consider all the items that we're talking about and make a decision from there.
I'll put it on the next agenda. I think you guys need to decide, are we moving forward with lowering the speed limit, or are you moving forward with just enforcement of the speed limit?
Or however we're going to handle it, to make it a little more formal.
That's going to matter. Yep. Yep. I'll put it on the next agenda.
Just, just for the record, I would request that the speed limit be lowered, but I'll take what I can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger.
Thanks, Ginger.
Any other citizens' comments out there?
Hugh Quinn has his hand up.
Hugh?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. I just think, I'll pile on to Ginger's discussion about the speed limit. So whenever we bring that topic back around again, I'd like to put Route 10 on the list. I live on Route 10, where the speed limit is 40 miles an hour. People are going 50 or 55 down Route 10, you know, by my house. It's kind of a straightaway. So it's a great opportunity to hit the gas. Later on in Route 10, it does go to 50. So there could be cases where people think it's 50, but it's really 40. And so whenever we get back around to enforcement, I'm not arguing for a lower speed limit. I'm arguing for better enforcement on Route 10.
Thank you, Hugh.
Yep. Thanks.
I think you're kind of opening up.
Hold on a second. You're welcome to comment. You're just going to have to walk up here and give your name and make your statement, so everybody else can hear you, too. That's on Zoom. And especially myself. Way to get there. Your name.
My name is Jessica Fresca. I happen to own a business that is directly across the street from one of these things.
The highway changes.
I'm not so sure. I think for data collection purposes, that's a good thing. But I don't think it actually deters people from speeding. I actually made a statement to somebody this weekend that I wanted to buy a cop car at auction and put it in my parking lot just to slow people down, because the police can't be everywhere at once. And I almost saw three accidents the other day. And I don't know, I think we're kind of opening up a big thing here. If we need more enforcement, that's, that's one thing. But, and that's really all I had to say, was that it's not going to stop anybody from speeding, really.
Thank you, Jessica. Well, it's, it's a problem all over town. As the town grows and there's more people here, it's become an issue in a lot of different places. And it's a hard one to address.
Well, and the other thing, too, is, you know, the whole COVID thing, where police officers have not been allowed to make routine traffic stops for a little over a year now. People know that.
It has a big effect on it.
People know that. And so reining that back in is going to take time with only five members to a police department.
A little too much freedom in our free country.
Yep, exactly. Sometimes.
Sometimes. Any other citizens' comments? Anybody else have their hand up? No? All right. We'll go on to our next item, which is old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business?
I can. So the Public Safety Building is continuing to move along. Interior work is moving rapidly. Pretty much everything is sheet rocked at this point. All base ceilings have been painted. Apparatus bay doors are being installed. You can see part of one. They're being installed behind those plywood. But you can see parts of one of them. They're getting in. Arnie? It's okay. Yes, you're fine. Painting, first primary coat of the walls is being done actually this week. Supposed to have started today. I will be going on Friday for a site visit to check that out. And the... for a site visit to check that out. And the spraying of the floors will be beginning, hopefully, next week. So we're really wrapping things up on the interior. Things are moving along very well.
When are they going to start the water fixtures and stuff?
I think that that maybe is happening now. I'm not sure, Jeff, but I can ask.
Okay.
I can get it, yep.
Julie, one thing, you said that contingency is down to 40,000 because of the winter heating costs?
The final winter heating cost? Well, no, I don't know that they're final. There's probably a little bit more. But the final winter heating costs have come in now. And so that used up a fair amount of the contingency. You know, the big pads to be able to pour concrete, all of that stuff certainly added to the cost and put that line in the budget over.
Well, it's just surprising to me that a job that was bid in the wintertime, well, when it was bid, and it was going to perform in the wintertime, that cost was not included with the bids of the different groups that bid. I mean, when you bid a job and you have to have a warm spot or whatever, usually it's inherited on the contractor to supply that heat and stuff. We're doing it, and I understand why, but it doesn't seem like that should have been the way it went.
They did carry a line for winter heating costs, but the explanation given to me was that with the amount of snow we received early on, that set a lot of things behind and required a fair amount more heat than what was anticipated. That is what contingency is for, those things. Like the heating costs, that was going to be an unknown. It just depends on the winter that you have. So, I'm not surprised, huh?
This is Vermont.
It is Vermont.
I mean, it snowed, okay.
Yep. I'm not surprised, and I'm very thankful it was not the whole contingency amount. We still have about 40,000. And there's still savings to come in. This is just where we're at, at one point in time. This changes almost daily.
And I don't want to nitpick, because you're doing a great job.
Yep.
I mean, the building looks fantastic, inside and out, and it's really coming along.
Yep. The heating cost was going to be the big unknown. And this is one of the reasons why, before we put this out to bid, Lee may remember, I asked over and over and over again, should we delay the bid? Should we delay the bid? Should we wait? Should we wait? So, we took the gamble, and I think we're fine. I think had we have delayed with COVID costs and the costs of how things have elevated-
Materials have skyrocketed.
We would have been way over had we have waited. So I still think we made the right choice in the end.
We did.
But we definitely had that discussion many a time.
Yeah. I mean, construction materials in the last month, they're going through the roof. They're absurd what they're doing with the prices. They're doubling in a lot of items and stuff. It's crazy. With no justification, other than, you know, the Suez Canal got blocked up, or there's resin is missing, or, you know, there's always an excuse, but it never makes any sense to me.
Exactly. So, moving on, we've started the first committee, the first meeting for the Emerald Ash Borer Committee in town. Town is tasked with doing an inventory of ash trees along all town rightaways. So the first group of people met, we are going to start really putting out a campaign to get as many people involved as possible. We talked about using the Green Day model, which is kind of, you train a few people and then they gather their people. And if we can get, you know, people that are willing to do, you know, a mile of their road, once they're trained to be able to identify. So we're going to kind of work on, from that avenue, and get as many people involved. It is a very daunting task. We have 97 miles of dirt road, 110 of dirt and pavement. So, it's a lot of road, a lot of rightaway to identify. The state has let us know that there is an app that can be downloaded right onto a smartphone. They're willing to let us use that to gather this information and create the inventory. So, you'll hear this every meeting for quite a while now, but if there's anybody out there that is interested in just, you don't have to do the whole town. If you're willing to do a section of your road, and want to learn what an ash tree looks like, because I know I don't know, Jeff and I are going to do Quarry Road, once I learn what an ash tree looks like. And, you know, please pitch in. This is a great thing for the town. We need to get on top of it, in case the Emerald Ash Borer beetle, I believe, hits any of our trees. We do need to identify these trees. It is a state requirement at this point.
Is Public Works going to get involved? I mean, they're tracking our roads.
Kirby is kind of running that committee for words. I'm kind of leaving that with him. And, yes, Public Works will definitely be involved. We're going to reach out to the tech center, to their horticulture and forestry program that they have, see if any of those teachers are interested in bringing their students out. I'm going to reach out to Green Mountain High School, you know, if there's students up there that are interested, be a great educational opportunity and a way to get them involved in some community work in their town. So-
Great.
You'll hear this for the next however long. The Pinnacle improvements are going along well at the Pinnacle. At the end of the year last year, we were able to get the signage up and parking areas created. That work is going to be finalized early spring. Some fencing is going to go up to better identify those parking areas. We had some people come in in the fall, some abutters who were concerned about some noise and things in the area. Things are definitely improved. The fencing between the town and one of the abutters will be going up as soon as Springfield fencing can get the fence for us. Shrubbery is going to block the other one. But I both have said the signage, the parking areas is definitely a big help. Police have commented that there is not, they're not seeing a lot of issues up there, like has been in past years. So, I just want to get that out there, that the Pinnacle is definitely improving greatly in the area.
How about the skate park? I remember there was supposed to be a presentation-
Yeah. I'm waiting to hear back from Justin. I emailed him again. He had wanted to do a presentation of some work they wanted, that the boarders wanted to do. Matt will be proceeding with the painting and fixing up what we can this year to make it safe. There are a few of those structures that are getting questionable. So we will be continuing down that road, and I am keeping after Justin. I was hoping that he would definitely continue with a presentation.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome. And then, so, we have received, late yesterday afternoon, the Act 250 permit for the gravel operation. A permit has been received. I will be getting all of you guys a copy of that. There are a couple of things that we may contest within that, and we can talk about that more later on. But with an Act 250 permit, the good thing is that even if we appeal for a couple of the conclusions or the conditions, the permit does not stay. So, we are able to start operating our pit. Kirby and I have talked. We'll be doing an RFP to have the clearing, land clearing done, getting that out ASAP, so that when we're allowed on the land, April 15th, we can get the road in, get the culvers in, and hopefully start getting the land cleared. I doubt that we will be able to actually extract material this fall. But we'll have the pit ready and be able to begin extracting first thing next spring, which will be great.
That's been a journey of, what, a year and a half?
Almost, a little over two, I think.
Over two?
It's been over two.
Because when I was reading the documents, when they're, well, that's right, the prep work started ahead of time, but when we finally put the formal document in, it's been about a year and a half. And the last part of it took another two or three months, when I thought it was going to be something pretty straightforward.
Yep. It's a tough process to go through.
Well, when I read the document, there's quite a bit in there.
There is.
There is a lot to go over and a lot to make sure that it's right, as far as the stipulations go. But the fact that it's in our hands and that we're able to do something is going to be a huge savings to the town in the future.
Absolutely. Yep.
So, I mean, that's been a project that we've had in our thoughts for a while, and I'm glad it's come out to the way it has.
Yes, we should be able to recognize some savings in the 2022 budget.
Yeah. That's great news. That really is.
And then lastly, I did, I'll keep this vague, because I don't want to reveal any whatevers, but I did hear from Tony Karns, the owner of the Old Jiffy Mart. They are interested in negotiating with the town on a potential part donation, part purchase of that property. So, that will be coming in an executive session, probably the next meeting.
I'm glad to see that there's some action regarding that property, whether it's with the town or whoever else. Because it's, the location where it is, is like the gateway to the center of our village, and it's not exactly the most attractive property in that area there. So, that would be nice to have that taken care of, one way or another, and see how that goes.
Those discussions-
They reached out to you?
Tony had reached out to me. Well, I had reached out to him a while ago to find out.
Quite a few times, I know.
What are you doing with this building?
It wasn't the first time someone talked to him, I know.
No. What are you doing with this building? And so, he, they had an exclusive on it, exclusive listing on it, and I believe that is coming up. So, he reached back out to me yesterday afternoon, threw some numbers at me, which we can talk about.
Great. Anything else, Julie?
That's it for old business.
Any board members have any items about old business that they would like to bring up? Lee, Heather, anybody?
I have none.
Nope.
Not at this time.
All set?
All set.
Next item on our agenda is, Scott Blair is here to request picnic tables on the green. I guess this started last year, and it was a big hit for the businesses on the green to have some picnic tables out there, especially with the COVID concerns that everyone had. From my observations, it seemed like they were used quite often. A lot of people using them and a lot of activity on the green because of it and stuff. Scott, would you like to talk to this issue?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. So, the picnic tables on the green were huge last year. It was a great success. I've already had people starting asking me when they're going to be going back out because of the nice weather we've received, and people want to be meeting with community members on the green in a public place that's outside. A part of my request is also to add two table, add two more tables. So last year, we did five tables on the green, and we'd like to add two more, just so we can get the other side of the gazebo some over in front of Fullerton as well.
So that would be seven tables total?
Yeah, total of seven tables, spread out throughout the green.
Julie, we need a motion for this, to authorize this.
I would. You did last time. I would.
Is there a timeframe on this? So, you're asking for seven tables from now until-
Until winter.
I have a question, Chairman. I just want to make sure, we had a little issue with the trash. Do we have a different plan for that? Or, because, you know, you can have all the beautiful tables out there, but when the trash builds up daily, is, how are we going to handle this? That's all.
We can work on that. I can talk to the Public Works guys and see what we can come up with. Towards the end of the year, we had that under control, right, Scott? What we were doing?
Yeah, we had it under control. We added a couple, you added a couple more trash cans out there, and then we figured out that it was a lot of people dumping from their cars into those trash. So then you put the signs up, so we worked on it last year.
Yeah. It worked more towards the end, more towards the end of the year.
I mean, normally, we only empty the receptacles, what, Mondays and Fridays?
Right. I think we started emptying them more often. I feel like, I feel like the guys were emptying them twice a week.
You know, and-
Which they're there, so they were, they were fine with it.
I agree with everyone. It's fine if they're going to be emptied, because the people on the picnic tables, you're using them. But when you, when you, when you talk about people stopping their cars and taking their trash out there, then, it's a whole different, different item there.
So, are the cans located next to the tables, or next to the road?
I think that placement of them could be better. And that's something we could probably work on this year.
All right.
Yeah.
So, they would be placed out as soon as possible, and until, what, snow flies?
Yeah, that's what we did last year, is until snow fell.
Last year, it was through October, I think.
Yeah, and I talked to Julie on a separate matter, just to ask her if we could keep them gone, because it went warmer until, or after that. So we waited, just because they were being used by school students and the community members still so much.
All right. And we could just leave that in Julie's hands, as far as those tables come in.
I mean, April 15th is traditionally the time when we can, we usually start something like that. Doing more outdoor, moving around.
Well, and the information booth will open probably early May, when Arnie can get over there and open it up. But, I mean, it's still freezing at night. It's not an insulated building. So, we can never do that building, usually before May. So, it's coming. So the bathrooms will be opened up soon.
Julie?
Yep.
Last year, as I recall, Carla was the head of the DRB, and there was something about that picnic tables weren't allowed. I-
Sometimes. It's like-
Yeah, at its best.
Yeah, I know. Two meetings in a row that I have a little gap, you know, a little problem with it.
It went dead on this end.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Go ahead, Heather. You were speaking. Heather?
They can't hear. Hang on.
Can you hear me? Heather?
No.
Hold on. Sorry.
Heather, can you hear us?
I can now.
All right, go ahead, Heather.
Go ahead.
Oh, what did you hear me say?
You were talking about the picnic tables, and Carla stating something about the math-
That it's not, yeah, it wasn't, she said it wasn't really in the bylaws or whatever. So I'm just asking, do we need to do something about that, or is it okay to just give approval every year, if that's the case?
Well, my mind is going in two different directions on that. I mean, that's, we don't typically get approval for a picnic table on a town park. We have them all over town.
But can we just, like, can we just look at what was said, so, and review it, so we can have a plan?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to allow seven picnic tables on the green until the fall, and under Julie's guidance and control, as far as when they get taken up. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Lee is the motion, and Lee is the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of having the picnic tables on the green again this year, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Scott, you're all set.
Can I just-
All right, thank you.
Comment that-
Hang in a second. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, not challenging what we just voted on, but I'm not sure this really should involve us. I mean, I think Julie's perfectly capable of making decisions about picnic tables on the green. So, that's my two cents.
So, in the past, this is something that has come up a few times. Currently, as it stands, use of town property for this type of thing requires select board approval. We have talked in the past about establishing a policy of when, it could be under the town manager's discretion, and when items would need to come to the board. We could certainly look at that for the future going forward, if the board wants to.
It's a hard one, only because, yeah, you're right, seven picnic tables on the green. But then, it's the car show, and all the Porsches are across the green and stuff, or it's the Fall Festival. So it kind of gets hard to get that gray area, even though, so we do some of the more mundane, straightforward ones. The ones that are a little more involved come before us also. So, I see your point, though. And then, we've talked about this before, about having the manager, town manager, have more authority to handle these smaller things like that, so it didn't have to become an issue. But that's a good point.
The other question I have, too, if I remember, when it was first proposed to us last year, there was certain distance away from the outline of the green, so that it's less dangerous, perhaps, with a lot of people going around. We've got the drive-through in front of all the restaurants, and the other buildings that are there. There was some, Scott, do you remember that? How it was going to be spaced?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if seven tables is too much?
Yeah, I don't have the records of exactly what those dimensions are on me. But those other two tables, they're just going to be down on the other side of the gazebo and the other side of the walkway.
Were there any tables there last time?
There was, no, no. We sprinted out through the rest of the green, and we didn't put any over there, because we wanted to respect the area over there for Fullerton.
Right, exactly. And they still, you still want to do that, I think.
Yeah, and I talked to them, and they actually, they loved the idea, because it's more seating on the green, and it looks great right in front of their restaurants, so.
Okay, okay. Good to know. Thank you.
All set? We already had the vote, so we don't have to worry about any more comments, I guess.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Scott. The next item on our agenda is, someone else would like to use the green. It's the Mountain Valley Climate Action Group. I don't know anything about this. Is there someone here to speak to this?
Is Melody Reed on?
Melody?
Okay, it doesn't look like there's anybody on. So, the Mountain Valley Climate Action Group is a group of individuals in town. I believe that she said there were four or five members at this point, who is looking at- who is looking at climate change and those types of issues. They just want to be able to set up a table and a little banner on the green on April 22nd from 11 to 4. They just want to sit there, have an opportunity for people to come talk to them. I think they're trying to solicit new members to their group. Again, this is really minor, not a big deal, but because they want to have it formal, they would need permission from the group, from the board, I mean.
We've allowed other groups like this all the time because of the exposure and where it is and stuff.
There's five.
Well, I'll make the motion to let the Mountain Valley Climate Action Group use the green April 22nd.
Correct, yep.
From what time to what time?
11 to 4.
11 to 4.
11 to 4.
I'll second.
Heather is the motion. Lee Dakin is the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next item on our agenda is a revisit of the Route 103 Bridge Project. This has been a controversial issue since it was first brought up a year ago. And we were asked to revisit it for a number of reasons. At this point, I don't see any changes that are, need to be made or have to happen regarding this project. We made a decision seven or eight months ago, I believe it was, last September.
Before I got on the board. It was over a year ago.
It was over a year ago. The state has come to us to just make sure that we are okay with the decision that we had made over a year ago. In the fall, I guess it was 2019, to combine two of the bridges into one new bridge with a new approach and to keep the Palmer Bridge. I wanted it brought back up because I was hoping some revelation would happen to some of the neighbors in that area, that they would come together and try to do what's best for the town and for their own selves, for their own properties also. But I don't see that happening. It's been a contentious issue in the neighborhood there. People have been very passionate about opposing it, and I understand why they would. Part of me understands why they would because it's a matter of the state or the town taking land from people to put up a new road to service one house in the neighborhood. That's it, one house. And actually, I thought that with the change in the road around the house that was in question here, that it would actually improve the value of the house because of the location of the road and stuff. I don't see that happening. I don't see us changing our mind. I think unless there's a board member that would like to make a motion to change this and do three bridges, combine the three into one and go the route of the condemnation, then it would have to be a formal motion. I personally am not going to make that motion. I don't see that happening at this point. But I am upset that we're not allowed to do what's best for this town for 3,000 people because of one person.
Mr. Chair, I don't see any reason to revisit the discussion that we had a year ago.
Any other board members have any concerns or questions before we move on?
Can I just clarify, when I, my understanding is that when the state came to us on the 7th, and it was the meeting of the 17th of March, correct? And it had this different proposal.
Yes.
That we chose to stay with, we went with option number two originally, and.
Which was Jewett and Thompson Bridges being combined into the one new one and the Palmer one staying.
Right, okay. So then we let the state know that that's what we, what we preferred. Okay. And there is somebody in, in the, what do we call this thing again? The Zoom line. Cheryl Joy has her hand up. I think she might have a comment. I don't know if this is the time for that or if we're still having.
She hasn't been able to put her hand down, Lee.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
No, she does. She's asking for her hand to be up.
Okay. That's up to you.
I, I'll give you, go ahead, Cheryl Joy, a quick comment, but I really don't want to revisit this, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll do it really fast and not get into all the ecological details. I think that for, how quick, Arnie? Do I have like a minute and a half?
No.
Just, I would say talk.
Okay.
Cheryl Joy, make it quick.
With regard to ecology of stream and riparian protection, and what the state wants us to do, I believe that reducing down to one bridge is the wise way to go. It's also the most economical way to go. And it's also the safest way to go. If, talking to a landscape designer working in, that has worked in development, people wouldn't design bridges the way we have, the way they are now. And reducing to one bridge rather than three riparian crossings is, is way better. I have something written up to say to you about all that, but that's it.
Thank you, Cheryl Joy.
I also want to point out that, oh, never mind. Arnie, can I just say something?
Yes, Heather, you can.
Okay, hi. You know, a year and a half ago, year ago, whatever it was when we made the decision, I voted to have one bridge. And I voted in that way because the access of the road, the increased traffic, I just felt that it was really the safest way to go. It was also, you know, two bridges, bridges are expensive. And I still feel that that could have been the right choice. But there was very little, what I understood at the time, collaboration from the people directly impacted with the properties. However, now that we're down the road, a property sold, all these things have happened, I think it would be very difficult now to revisit this. But I do want to say that I agree with you, Arnie, that it's extremely disappointing that we find ourselves in this place. And I think the timing of the state coming to us is also, you know, problematic because if we were going to make this decision, we should have made it way back then. And, and so I just wanted to say that I still feel the decision, how I voted a year and a half ago was right. But I, I'm, I'm changing stream because of sale of properties and where we're at in the process. But it is something that's very disappointing.
Thank you, Heather. I allowed one comment, so I guess I have to keep on going. Go ahead, Mr. Roper. Mr., Tim, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Sorry for the background here. I'm out working in my shop this evening and tuning into the meeting tonight. I just want to ask a question first, more, and then maybe express an opinion. When the state came back to the town, and I may have missed this, was there any difference in the financial offering from the state?
Yes, there was. There was some other grant that was out there, and there was a reduction in the town's contribution, I believe, from 10% to 5%.
Regardless of the project that's selected, that is still the option, yes. That's still.
So there, so there was. And then they just wanted to verify with us that the choice that we had made a year and a half ago was the choice we wanted to stay with and present us with that added information.
So just for clarity, the savings is applied no matter which option we take? Is that what I just heard?
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay. But there was, there would be significant savings to the town if we, if the board did choose to revisit and reverse their decision. Approximately how much savings would that mean for the town?
I. That's, that's a hard one to quantify only because of the condition of the bridge. As it is now with the repairs that were done on it, there is at least a 15-year, possibly more lifespan on it. And the original quotes that we had that were in the millions of dollars probably will not hold true because the pilings and the footings on the bridges that are there are in excellent shape. So that even in the future, if we had to do anything with that bridge, it probably would not be as expensive as we thought. It would be a lot less.
And there is grant funding that would help the town at that time as well.
Okay, so at the end of the day, there's not a huge savings to the town either way. Is that what we're?
There is a saving, so huge, it's how you define huge and what that savings is. I mean, yes, there would be a savings, but not as much as we had thought in, and when we originally visited this, this project.
Okay, well, I'll just add my opinion. Thank you for that information. That's helpful. It is a shame that the town has to spend extra money on, on account of one property owner. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, it's how we choose to live in our community.
Well, and it's more than one property owner. I think we need to clarify. There's several properties there.
There was, there's been two that have been the sticklers in this whole thing. And one of the property owners is suing the town at right, at this point right now, so. All right, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is our annual financial plan approval. This is just some.
Arnie? Amy?
I guess I would just like to, Amy Mosher. So I just want to ask what the town is going to do. Are they going to get back to Jonathan Griffin and tell him to take the Palmer Bridge dot off? Any potential future, I mean, I would, I would feel peace of mind knowing that the town was going to now reach out to V-Trans.
I have to, yeah.
And say that you've formally made a decision and that they can go on with their engineering design phase, knowing that this is the path they're going to take. So maybe I would feel comfortable knowing that the town is formally making some sort of.
We're, we're going to carry through with the proper channels and the proper things that we have to do to notify the state and carry the project forward with the decision that we made a year and a half ago.
Okay. And, and just the last week, I talked to the town manager. And she had reached out to Jim Holler, who said, I think you had asked questions about Palmer Bridge and how good the.
They have that information.
The work was done. And, well, maybe Mr. Roper doesn't know, or some of these other people that think I'm the problem. I'm not the problem.
Well, I, I believe I stated that, but that's okay.
I don't think anybody used that word, "problem."
Well, one property owner. Excuse me, I just want to finish that. So the bridge repairs that were done to Palmer apparently are good for 10 to 15 years now. And any future repairs were estimated at between 200 and $250,000. So the original bid that came in from the state was to, it would cost $2 million to fix that bridge.
That was a complete new bridge.
Yeah, I just want to, I want you to understand that, you know, that was what you were going on to begin with. And now it's, we're getting to the facts now.
Could be wiped out at their first ice storm in the spring also, and then we will be looking at $1 million. I mean, things happen, things change.
And I can understand your disappointment.
That's all right.
And I, I hear that. But I appreciate that you're sticking with the original decision.
Thank you. Our annual financial plan approval, which is basically a document for the state that specifies how we spend our money regarding our Class 1, 2, and 3 roads and the money that we spent towards our town highways. So we need a motion on both these, Julie, separately, or?
Yes, both separately.
And this is get signed by everyone?
Correct.
So I'd need a motion to approve our annual financial plan for town highways according to 19 VSA 306J.
So moved.
Second.
For the year 2021. Please move. Jeff's the second. Sorry, Heather. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor of approving that document, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Make sure I got the right. The next item is a, and it's regarding the annual financial plan approval also. It's a certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory. And basically, it says that we certify that we have adopted the standards and that we do certify, we have an up-to-date highway inventory for the year 20, April 7th, 2021.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Please the motion. Jeff's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Julie, can I come in tomorrow and sign this?
Sure.
Okay.
You're all set down, really?
Yep, we're all set.
We'll go on to our next agenda item, liquor licenses. And there's quite a collection of them. First-class liquor license for the Pizza Stone and the Stoneheart. Is the Pizza Stone still known as the Pizza Stone?
I think they're still, I think that's still their corporate name.
She's opening a restaurant partially again, the Pizza Stone.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think she's changed that. But there is also Preston's Pizza. But I don't think the liquor part doesn't have anything to do with Preston's.
Because I thought there was some kind of legal stuff in the background between. It was involved with that place where they couldn't use the name Pizza Stone for this establishment. I'm just making sure that.
I haven't been notified of anything.
No?
We haven't.
All right. So these are the.
That's first class.
First-class Pizza Stone and the Stoneheart.
So I have a, I have a, this may not be the right time, but I have a question. Is there any chance that when someone signs one of these as the owner, the request, the request being made for these licenses, that they, we could have the next line being their printed name? I can't read the names of any of these people who are signing these things.
It's not our form, Lee. It's a state form.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
Everything's in order on these? I mean.
Rick has, yeah, the chief has, yep, yep, has waited.
So the second-class licenses for the Dollar General, Mediterranean, and Smitty's Marker.
Julie, three signatures are enough?
Correct.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'm more than happy to come in, though, if you want more.
Entirely up to you.
This one looked like I went through the rain.
I don't know, I'm just getting.
We don't get official pens for these, Julie?
No, sorry. Budget cuts.
Third-class Stoneheart. And the last one is outside consumption for the Pizza Stone and the Stoneheart.
What is it?
U.S. Department of something.
I have no idea. You couldn't admit them? Okay, then I would get rid of it. Yep, delete them. Kick them out. Some kid with way too much time on their hands.
You got that right. Sheepers.
Of course, it could be an adult, I shouldn't stereotype.
And they want to hijack the meeting, go for it.
I'll just remove them. You can remove them, Amy.
Yeah, just try.
Go ahead.
That's it?
Yeah.
All set with the
Oh, yeah, don't worry about that, Amy's got that out going, yeah.
Entertainment permits.
Zip them, get rid of them.
Yeah, they're out, they're out. Amy's a bouncer.
Uh, new business.
No, you got entertainment permits.
Oh, I skipped the whole number nine again, huh? It's written right in front of me, too. You have them in your hand with the color codes right there, and it's still blowing. Entertainment permits for the Pizza Stone, Country Girl, and the Stoneheart. I did notice that, I think it was on the Pizza Stone, that they were asking for more days than they usually do? Is that the case?
I don't think so.
No?
No, Debbie had indicated, I don't believe there were any changes.
Asking for seven days a week.
I think they had that the last time.
They had it?
I think they had that the last time. Debbie noted that there were no changes.
There were no changes?
No.
Okay.
So.
Because I remember that this permit originally involved neighbors and there was, there was a lot involved.
Several years back, but the past couple of years, this has not changed.
It's not a change?
No.
All right, thanks.
No, I don't believe so.
All right. I've been cross-motored like all along, too.
They're coming to change out a couple wrinkly ones next week.
All set, Mr. Chair.
All set. Next item on our agenda is new business and future agenda items and our next agenda. I think, I think we should bring up the paper of record.
Okay.
To make sure we clarify where we're going to go with that as far as if there's going to be any changes or what we're going to do, get a little more information regarding it, and take into account the citizens' comments and what's been going on, and discuss it then. An item that I would like to put on a future agenda item is the Tomaso property. That's that 1,800 acres, or 1,800, 1,900 acres, whatever, somewhere around thereabouts that the town was looking to purchase and missed out on it when the logging company from northern New Hampshire bought it and stuff. I was talking to one of the loggers there, and they've got about another year or two, at least two years of more of logging. And then I don't know what's going to happen with the property and stuff. I would love to revisit acquiring that property, and I think it would fit in to a lot of what goes on in this town. When we talk about our zoning regulations and our town plan, as far as having giant forest blocks that are contiguous, I think it would help when it comes to any issues that might arise with the state as far as what we do with our zoning when we have land like that that is preserved for the future of this town and for the future citizens of this town. I just would like to revisit it earlier than later, just to get some information, to see what the plans are of the owner after they log a parcel like that. Now, the state's very concerned about giant forest blocks, and I would hope they would be able to help us out in any direction that we decided to go or not to go, depending on what happens. And I just would like to see this as an agenda item to discuss, to prepare if, if it is going to become available again or whatever's going to happen with it in a couple of years from now. Last time we missed out, and I think part of it was because the owners did not want to wait for a year for the financing to come into place and the fundraising that we would have had to do to, to secure it, so they went for the, and this is just an, an opinion that they went for the, for the money that was there and they sold it. I think it's worth at least a conversation with the owner to pick their brain a little bit, to see what their intentions are with that property after they, basically, it's being clear-cut. I've been across the property a couple of times now in different parts of it, and it's a lot different than it looked like when we were first interested into it, interested in it and stuff. And I'd like to see that as a, a future agenda item, just to at least flush out some information on it.
I think that's a brilliant idea.
I agree.
The Jiffy Mark might not be about one either.
No, that'll be, that'll be on as well. Yeah.
That one might be a little easier. Anybody else have anything that they would like to see on future agendas or new business?
So did we have the Andover Road? We won't have that data by the next meeting, will we?
No, no, but you need to, you, Arnie, wanted it on the next agenda, next agenda, to discuss about like what, what direction you want to go. So I do have that for the next one, yeah.
So in the meantime, Julie, that, we have to have the roads not have a freezing temp in the air before we can put our strips back out? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, because what happens is the strips go out and they're there for a two or three week period of time.
Right.
If it freezes at night, then the reading, the readers, the little computer things on there freeze, and then somebody runs over them and they smash, is what I was told.
I just wanted to clarify that. That's what I thought I understood you were saying.
Mountain comes long after 12 inches of April snow.
Correct.
And rips it right up.
Well, that's what people forget. That's not unusual.
I know. I think it was June 1st was the latest that I've ever seen a snowstorm around here, and it was significant, too.
So we need to wait for we put those back out.
Yeah. Anything else for new business or future agenda items? Hearing none, before we go into executive session for a DRB interview, I don't think we're going to be making a decision on an appointment for the Development Review Board. I, another person shows some interest in that position. I would like to have them give their letter of interest and have an interview with us also, just to give them that opportunity. I think it's important that when people show an interest in doing something for the town and stuff, we have to accommodate them, so.
So you're just going to do the one interview tonight?
We'll still have the interview for sure with Mr. McDonald, and then we'll go straight to the manager's review after that, who will not be in appointment today, and we'll go from there.
Good.
So I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for a Development Review Board interview with Mr. Scott McDonald.
I'll make that motion.
Lee Dakin is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Lee Gustafson's the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.